Board meeting, we convened it at six o'clock and had an executive session. We are now reconvening, and I'm going to ask the science research students to lead us in the pledge to the flag. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, you guys take a seat. Come sit over here. There are seats over here.
I don't know if there's seats. There's too many.
No, I don't think so.
Then the kids is too many.
They can sit together. Oh, there are the minutes.
Do you want to read theirs or?
Yes. You go up there together? You want to go up there?
All right. It's okay.
Come on, pick it up.
Kids on top.
Good evening, everyone. You guys ready? This is the part where I'm going to embarrass you, but just a little bit, okay? Just a little. All right, so, welcome, everyone. I don't want to downplay how much fun I typically have at board meetings, but I do want to say that the events leading up to this board meeting were certainly a highlight of our year so far. And this is really the culmination of work of many of our elementary school students, our high school students, under the leadership of Ms. Liz Bros and Ms. Jen Bruno. So I'd like to start by giving them all a round of applause for making this possible. So the students that are here this evening were selected out of many, many elementary school students who planned, facilitated, created, and presented presentations during our elementary school science fair. And these projects were judged to be the top 10 projects out of, I'm looking for those, 40? 30? 50? More projects. So certainly a huge accomplishment for these students to be recognized. So we thought it was right to invite them to a board meeting, one to recognize them, but we really wanted to provide them an opportunity to share their projects with a larger audience. And as you can see, this room is packed with individuals that got to see your project. So thank you all for your continued work, your excellence, and I enjoyed watching all your projects for a second time, all right? So now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Parmley, who's the president of our Board of Education.
Science research is such an amazing thing, and to see young people so enthused about science is so exciting. One thing I noticed when I listened to your projects tonight is all of you explored observations of your world. You saw things in your world, you had questions about it, and you explored it more deeply. And you developed new questions, which is really incredible, because that will lead you to something else. So congratulations to all of you. First, Nicholas Morabito, could you come up, please? We have to ask you a question first." I'm like, "Oh, no, not a question." But it was really, it was excellent. Jackson Rodriguez. I was intrigued at the... Yeah, the bouncing balls. Kevin John. Oliverio gave him some information about Sunken Mine Road and cannons being made for the Civil War, and he was like, "Wow." You never know what you're going to learn at a board. Macy Martinelli and Isabella Constantino. Their enthusiasm was over the top.
I asked them not to leave their eggs in our school. It's impossible to take them away.
Adam Davino. Tucker Anderson and Julian Russo. Everything you ever wanted to know about your digestive system was marbles and marble rock.
Another project that has to go.
Joseph Lindar. And honest, smart and honest. And William Martinelli. I also want to thank the high school volunteers that made this possible, because Mrs. Bros and Jen could not have done this without support. There were quite a lot of high school volunteers. We only have four here, but we're going to recognize all of them. So Hafsa Bayoun, she's not here. Faith Caravone. They're volunteering somewhere else, I can guarantee. Kayla Francis. Abby Hosingen. I'm sorry. Isabella Key. Kate Nielsen's twice. Logan Perelson. Maggie Sampson. McKinley Scherf. Say it for me? McKinley, say it for me?
Scherf.
Oh, Scherf, sorry. Julia Tough. I was thinking about what it means to be a mentor, and their impact on these students and all the rest of the students is truly incalculable. They taught them new things, gave them guidance. These students felt seen and heard by an older person, which is really powerful, and gained support from others. But I hope that you all felt like you got something back, too, from helping them. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
What are we doing?
Watch the wire.
You're going to stand up.
All right, let's cut.
Great job.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Great job.
Great job, guys.
Watch the wire.
Watch the wire.
I didn't.
Do you have a pencil?
I learned something from all of them, so.
Okay, I'm sorry to lose our audience. Or some of our audience. I'm sorry, some of our audience. The next item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. However, before I open the meeting to public comments on the listed agenda items, I'd like to address item number seven. We are hoping to enter into a successor agreement with Dr. Luff in order to reduce the health care premium contributions provided by the district upon his retirement. There is no additional compensation in this agreement. Dr. Luff's contact with Putnam Valley is not due to be... I'm sorry. Dr. Luff's contract with Putnam Valley is not due to be renewed, but last year, he, in line with the goal of having fiscally sustainable budgets in future years, began the discussion and has agreed to reduce the health care premiums the district will be responsible for. Now I will open it up for public comments on any agenda item.
Miranda Zaki, I have a kindergartner and an eighth grader. Public comments on budget presentation. This year's budget was beginning to be spoken about by our business manager at one of our first 2023 Board of Ed meetings. I quote, "If you don't pass a budget, it will only hurt the children. This threat needs to stop immediately. Parents are smarter than this. Teachers are smarter than this. I have had teachers tell me, 'Well, it's true, Miranda. They tell us to make sure the budget gets passed, or it will hurt us and the students.'" Every budget ever made, the makers wanted to pass. Of course they do. When a budget doesn't pass, it creates a world of reevaluation, new strategies, and most of all, a deeper evaluation of the makers themselves. You mean to tell me that a budget of so many lines, so many pages, you could only find cuts that would hurt the most valuable people in our district, the learners and the teachers? I don't think so. Look, we all drive to work. Out of our salary is gas to get there and transportation. It's part of our money after taxes, after social security. It's not even part of the gross income, but the take-home income. There's a very selfish agenda that needs to be squashed. There are people that step up to the top and trample on so many that work under their supervision. Be careful of that. It bites you back harder. Ant colonies do it right. They bring back all the food to the queen and take care of the entire colony. The queen doesn't take more than it needs to survive. The heart is the only living flesh that has the right to be selfish. It feeds itself first and then takes care of all the other organs. Leave the selfishness to the heart. Last Board of Ed meeting, I watched Sam stress how important it is to get to 2.5%. I watched Jill state, "We only need 2.4%." Stop it. We see through this. Stop, and it's time the team becomes one, parents and their children and their teachers, with our administration. Listening is critical, not hearing, but listening, two different things. Mayapack schools have 3,875 students, five schools, a superintendent salary of 252, 440, four-plus years of experience. How many schools do we have? How many students do we have here? A superintendent of 279, three years' experience? Carmel, five schools, student ratio 3,973, superintendent salary of 252, six-plus years of experience. And all you can find is to take from taxpayers and children and our teachers.
Thank you.
Any other comments on listed agenda items? Okay. The treasurer's report for January and February is available in the district office. I'm going to ask the students if they have a report this evening.
Hi. So I would like to say that we, a couple of weeks ago, we identified our valedictorian and our salutatorian, and our valedictorian is Michael Fitzmorris and our salutatorian is Spencer Brown, so I want to congratulate them here. I'd also like to remind you all about the opening night of our musical Something Rotten here at the high school. It'll be in the pack, and opening night is April 28th, so please be sure to come out and support our art students. They do a really great job every single year, and they really work hard for months on end on these plays and these shows. So I really want to encourage everyone to come and support them, even if you can. Our IB assessments will begin on May 3rd, and we have a lot of students that will be participating in those, so I would like to wish them luck and just remind them to balance their time and study. I would also like to say that regarding the swatting incident two weeks ago, I would like to say, like, I feel like our school handled it very well. I feel like our administration was very supportive of the students, and on behalf of the students, I'd like to thank the faculty, the teachers, the administration for being very supportive and being very communicative during that time, because in the climate that we're in now, it's definitely very stressful, very scary, so I would like to thank everybody that was there to support the students, and I hope that the faculty and everybody was able to get a similar level of support during that time, because it's scary for everyone, not just the students. In terms of seniors, we're beginning our plans for the end of the year, and they're kind of coming into play now, which is kind of shocking, because I feel like we were just those fourth graders coming into the board meetings, doing our little presentations. But we're, like, things like cap and gowns, we're finalizing our yearbook, and that'll be sent out tomorrow or so. Seniors, college decisions or other post-high school plan decisions are going to be coming out around May 1st. And our college decisions and post-high school decisions will be available on Instagram, pbhs.decision23 on Instagram, and those will all be out around May 1st. We have a lot of awards I would like to mention, especially specifically in science research, we have a lot of awards at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and that was a couple of weeks ago. We had a lot of awards for that. And we also have three students that are eligible to go to Junius Olympiad in a couple of weeks, so I'd like to congratulate them, because that's a huge accomplishment, and not many students get to go there. We also have a lot of community projects going on, especially with the honor societies. For example, we have the Science National Honor Society hosting a park cleanup in Peak Skill for the members on Sunday, so I'd like to just commend our honor societies for giving back to our communities and just doing a great job of making sure our community is healthy, making sure that we can get resources to the people that would like to utilize them. And that is my report.
Nice. Emily, anything to add?
Yeah, no, that's all we have.
Okay. Dr. Luff.
Good evening. So it seems hard to believe, but this is actually the first time we're meeting again since our last meeting, when we wished our girls' basketball team best of luck as they moved on to the state championships. So I do want to again extend my congratulations to an extremely successful season. We couldn't be more proud of their achievements, and we look forward to continuing to see the team's growth moving forward. I've had the opportunity to attend some of the CAS presentations at the high school. Again, I know myself and many board members are able to attend. It's always impressive to hear the students present on their projects and as they make their way through the diploma program. I attended the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony at the middle school. It was a packed house. I know that two of our own students, Michael Leoni and Faith Caravone, gave the keynote speeches, and I want to thank everyone involved for making that possible. Our elementary school held their musical Annie. I can tell you right now, there is nothing cuter than a bunch of elementary school students standing on stage singing Annie songs. Definitely a highlight of every year. So again, congratulations to the teachers, the students, and obviously the dedication of the parents to get them there, to all the play rehearsals to make that all possible. We are beginning a capital project planning process, and the invitation will be going out to the community, asking for community participation on a facilities planning committee. Our high school had their aspire art celebration. We filmed the next episode of Inside Putnam Valley Schools with Eric Gross. Our middle school book fair is currently underway, and just a little public service announcement, we were able to, this evening, we'll be approving our bid for roofwork here at the high school. And the caveat there is that this work is being accomplished without any cost to taxpayers, where the district is using debt service funds put aside to complete this work. So we were able to do almost $2 million of work without needing to ask taxpayers for any additional funds. But really, what I wanted to spend a majority of my report on this evening is talking a little bit about our debrief from the event at Putnam Valley High School, and obviously reverberated around the district from March 30th. Before I do that, I do want to invite up Brian Shanahan from Alteris. So Brian is our consultant from Alteris. I just asked him to be here to help answer any questions, but right now, I just wanted him to give a quick introduction as to what that serves, what Alteris offers the school district, and maybe a little bit about his own background. Thanks, Brian.
No problem. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Shanahan. I'm the senior vice president for Alteris. We are a consulting company that works specifically with K-12 schools for the last 15 years. We're in 65 school districts right now, and over 400 public and private schools in five different states. I've been working with the company for 15 years alongside, as I was retiring from my law enforcement career, I was a school resource officer in a district not that far away a few years ago, so I really commend the district for endorsing and embracing the school resource officer program. It is an invaluable relationship to be able to have, not just for safety and security, but to have that relationship with students and staff, to really get to know things, because that is a big part of red assessment, which is one of the facets of things that we do. A few years ago, we did an assessment of the school district, where we looked at policies, procedures, infrastructure, made some recommendations, things that could be resolved, but no cost, with some training, and some other items, also made some recommendations potentially that you embraced as a school district for safety and security purposes, for any additions for those kind of capital projects, infrastructural kind of pieces. Our ongoing work with the district, I continually am available 24/7, and our company is available 24/7 for safety and security emergency purposes. We have a team of consultants, so if I'm not available, because I work directly with the district, we have other folks that are immediately available for those training processes. We meet with the building-level emergency response teams quite often, answer questions, run some tabletop drills, talk about best practices nationwide to have more of a muscle memory, rather than building anxiety when it comes to these emergencies and drills, to have some muscle memory and work with that common sense approach when it comes to things. And one of the other items that we do a lot with, assist with debriefs of any major incidents, and assist with media relations if necessary, and we do the emergency plans. And I think that's a big piece, as you all know, because you have to approve that as a Board of Ed, the district-level emergency plan, which is in the hands of the district right now, and we're able to modify any new additions that are required by NICID. Annually, the NICID plans need to be completed prior to and approved prior to September 1st of every year, as well as the confidential building-level emergency response plans. And I think that's a big piece, and I've been in a couple of Board of Ed meetings this past week. I think everybody needs to realize there's a lot of things that you don't see that are occurring, and a lot of things that are very confidential, but there is a plan for it, and that's part of the drilling process. And that's where we're up to working on updating each building-level plan with each of the building administrators and each of the teams as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. So I want to begin by first addressing the obvious emotion that was attached to the events from Thursday, March 30th, and they shouldn't be underscored. It was a traumatic experience for everyone involved, for our students, for our teachers, for our staff, for administrators, for myself, and as we learned, for law enforcement. I entered the high school alongside police officers carrying rifles that thought there was someone in the building. And it took a while for that sort of trauma to set in, but it was certainly real, and I was one of the individuals that I went around with police officers to unlock doors, and I saw the faces of teachers and students when that door was unlocked, and it was really a scary moment for everyone involved. And luckily, it ended up being a hoax, and will certainly serve as a learning opportunity for us, but I did want to first address that it was an emotional event, not just for the high school, but obviously for the middle school and the elementary school as well. What we did afterwards, we took some time, and we really invested ourselves into an after-action debrief. So what that debrief included was interviews, review of phone logs and camera footage, meetings with members of the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, as well as the New York State Police, administrative team meetings, working with our consulting company, Alteris, as well as a meeting of the district emergency response team. I want to first say that there was many things that went well. I couldn't be more proud of our students and staff at the high school. Upon entering the building, there was nobody in sight. Everybody was behind locked doors, no doors were left unlocked. Some classrooms took the extra step of barricading their doors and tying it off and doing anything they could to keep the students in their care, safe. The law enforcement response was immediate and forceful. On my ride from Putnam Valley Elementary School to here, I was passed by four police cars in a six-minute drive. They were not waiting for me to pull over to get out of their way. I want to commend Mr. Mello, who was able to effectively communicate with his staff within five minutes of the initial lockdown, using a reminder, hoping to alleviate some of the concerns that staff had within their classrooms, and being able to share that information with students. Within two minutes of the initial phone call, we had received confirmation from law enforcement that it was, in fact, a swatting call was made to multiple districts across the region. However, that was information that many of the responding officers did not yet have. And timing. Once we established an official timeline to go back through from the initial call, arrival of police... Everybody was behind locked doors, no doors were left unlocked. Some classrooms took the extra step of barricading their doors and tying it off and doing anything they could to keep the students in their care, safe. The law enforcement response was immediate and forceful. On my ride from Putnam Valley Elementary School to here, I was passed by four police cars in a six-minute drive. They were not waiting for me to pull over to get out of their way. I want to commend Mr. Mello, who was able to effectively communicate with his staff within five minutes of the initial lockdown, using a Remind App, hoping to alleviate some of the concerns that staff had within their classrooms and being able to share that information with students. Within two minutes of the initial phone call, we had received confirmation from law enforcement that it was in fact a SWAT-in call was made to multiple districts across the region. However, that was information that many of the responding officers did not yet have. And timing, once we established an official timeline to go back through from the initial call, arrival of police, and the beginning of the, to end the lockdown, starting to unlock the doors, the total event took ten minutes. Being in this building, it felt like hours, not minutes, and I could only imagine what it felt like for those behind locked doors. That being said, there are certainly many areas of improvement. So I'm going to do my best to highlight some of these areas of improvement that were identified in our after-incident review. For obvious reasons, I'm going to do my best not to share any procedural information. Obviously, the more information regarding our internal practices that are made public, the less safe our buildings become. So first and foremost, the greatest error occurred when we did not follow our practice procedure and use an automated lockdown system, instead reverting to the historical way of locking down buildings independently via the PA system. This created a situation where the middle school, a mere twenty feet away, was unaware of what was occurring at the high school. Unbeknownst to anyone at the high school, administration, or law enforcement, who all believed the middle school was in lockdown. So we've already began to retrain staff in the use of the automated system. We're trying to change that muscle memory to know in that instance if the call is made that we can't revert back to how it's been done for twenty-plus years, but instead, how we really began practicing it this school year in terms of campus-wide lockdowns. Trying to emphasize that this is not the responsibility of any one individual, but the collective responsibility of all, because any individual, any adult in any building, has the ability to lock down that building from their own classroom or office. We've made changes to automate the automated system in order to make it easier for office staff to initiate a lockdown, and we're going to replicate those systems across both the middle and the elementary school. We learned a lot about our communications. We've changed our process in how we deploy members of the district emergency response team to ensure that those making the communications, our public relations staff, have accurate and firsthand information. There was communications that were sent out during this event that were based on second-hand information in our own district's procedures, and some of those ended up being inaccurate. I made sure to correct any inaccuracies in my final email that went out to the community, and the first piece of that was acknowledging the fact that the middle school was in fact missed during the initial lockdown. So we'll now be deploying additional staff to the building with the sole purpose of being able to provide our public relations staff with firsthand information in order to get timely and accurate communications out to the community. We learned new things about how law enforcement will deploy itself, not just at the impacted building, but across the district, and we've changed our procedures accordingly to welcome those staff members in other buildings. We're working to empower all staff, administration, teachers, and staff members, that if they hear something, see something, that they, everybody, is empowered to make the decision to lock down a building. No one will ever get in trouble for doing so. Erring on the side of caution is what we want from all. So we want to empower anybody who has information that would lead a building to be in lockdown to take the necessary steps to make that happen. We learned how quickly our internal communication travels compared to communication across multiple police agencies. In the case of our lockdown on the 30th, responding officers arrived from, obviously, the Putnam County Sheriff's Department, the New York State Police, Westchester County, as well as Yorktown. So while we're able to communicate firsthand via cellphone, walkie-talkie, or office phones, the communication for law enforcement across agency is a much more complex and cumbersome responsibility. So we have to plan accordingly that we'll have information that they do not yet have, and I'll provide them the time and space to do what they need to do until they receive the same information we do. As an administrative team, we spoke a lot about the social-emotional well-being of our students and staff following a lockdown. I think many of us were too far immersed into the lockdown themselves to be able to have the wherewithal to recognize the emotional needs of many. So a change that we're making as an administrative team is, following any lockdowns, is to hold a prolonged hold in place, to gather our clinical staff, develop a message, and deploy our administrative and clinical staff members to each classroom to check on the well-being of all our students and staff. We've made some changes to our release-from-lockdown procedure to make the materials necessary for law enforcement, maps of our building, keys to every door, more readily accessible. So there'll be cabinets mounted in the vestibule of each building, accessible only to law enforcement, as well as master keys located outside the building, again, accessible to only law enforcement. And then the last piece that came up was, despite the fact so many individuals were impacted by this drill, we confirmed at the 911 dispatch center that not a single call was placed to 911. While several of us were aware that the call had precipitated from the dispatch center, many were unaware. And this again speaks to the topic of empowerment. We want all administrators, faculty, and staff to feel empowered to pick up the phone and call 911. During our debrief with law enforcement, they made it clear, the more information they have, the 911 dispatcher receives, the more information they can relay to the responding officers. Even if the information you're sharing is, "I've seen nothing and heard nothing," that gives them valuable information regarding what area of the building may not be impacted. Some of the action steps we outlined following our debrief was, obviously, a reemphasis on training, and this will begin, well, it'll probably begin this year, but an aspect of this will be a district-wide training held during our August conference day. We have our most staff members available in all at one location. This will allow us to get staff members that are typically difficult to schedule, lunch monitors, bus monitors, aides, individuals that are not typically in the buildings during other conference days or after-school PD sessions. We have many partners, Altaris, our regional safety coordinators, as well as the sheriff's department, all willing to come in and lend a hand to help improve our trainings. I think we did a really good job with this leading up to COVID. I think COVID put an end to many of these security briefings, and this was an obvious sign that it's time to get back to the safety trainings. The second item as an action step is I will be requesting the Board of Education to include an additional SRO in our 2023 school budget. For many years, we've served as two campuses with an SRO on one and an SPO, School Patrol Officer, on the other, and we think the events of the 30th of March were just another example as to why now is the right time to increase the number of officers we have on both our elementary school and middle school and high school campuses. Thank you. Questions?
I realize that Mr. Mello used the Remind App, but I'd like to see something improve internally between all of the schools. Everybody has a cellphone nowadays. I'd like to see if a school is in lockdown, that they will contact the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school, administrator to administrator. If the principal cannot do it, there are assistant principals, that can be their job to do. If you can't reach an administrator, call the main office. Office staff has got to get ahold of the administrator and say, "We've got to put this place in lockdown." I'm concerned about why the middle school was not searched. I understand they were not in lockdown, we get it, communication broke down, but if a bank robber goes to a bank, doesn't mean they're not going to go next door to that convenience store and do something there as well. So that for me is a big safety concern. But that is primary to me, and I've been in this situation with enough lockdowns, I would be very upset as a middle school, you know, assistant principal, if we did not hear that the high school was in lockdown. How am I supposed to know? I would not just rely on the electronics, because sometimes when you want them to work, they work, and other times, they don't. We're talking about safety of our kids here, and one another. And the other thing is, I commend everybody for barricading, for pulling your shades down, all of that, but we have to make sure that whoever has that key in the door says, "This is the police, this is Dr. Luft," whomever it is, because you don't know that. You just don't. And it's not anybody's, nobody wants to guess at that time. You're frazzled enough. As far as the elementary school goes, who advised the officers that it was okay for the elementary school to go back to business as usual?
The, no, the officers arrived at the elementary school, they asked Dr. Podesta to move the students into hold in place, and she did. So the students stayed, some were still on buses, those who had entered the building stayed in the auditorium, and they held there until the police officers at the elementary school not only cleared the elementary school, the modular building, the district office, and the transportation building. So it wasn't until all of that was done that they let Dr. Podesta know that she could release the students.
Thank you.
To your first point, I think what we noticed here is accessing the electronic system became a single point of failure. And because the electronic system was not used, it wasn't a failure of the system, but yet not accessing the system that caused what was the most glaring mistake, which was the middle school not being put into lockdown. So what we've been trying to do is to create multiple layers of notifications. So there's not a single point of failure. And some of the ways we're doing that, obviously, we have an administrative tech group, we have walkie-talkies that are capable of communicating across districts, we have walkie-talkies that are able to interrupt the conversation. So if the middle school is in the midst of changing classes and Travis is speaking to someone on the walkie-talkie, it'll actually interrupt his communications in order to broadcast an announcement. And the final thing that we're doing is we're tying the technology in where anytime any building is put into lockdown, that every administrator will receive an automatic alert on their cellphone notifying them that the building's been put in lockdown. And what that will do is, so we had a lockdown drill at the elementary school today. Typically, the middle school and the high school would go into a lockout, and now, we've learned, they should also go into hold in place, but that requires a physical, or had required a physical phone call to notify the middle school and the high school that the elementary school was in fact in lockdown. And now that process is being automated. So now all of our middle school and high school administrators will automatically receive an alert on their phone notifying them that the elementary school has in fact gone into lockdown, and then they'll now be aware of the procedures they have to take on their own campus, and obviously vice versa if the lockdown occurs on this campus. So we're doing our best to create multiple layers of notification to ensure that there's no single point of failure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could make a recommendation, Dr. Luft, I love the idea of a full staff training, that's important, but I would make that yearly, because as you yourself said, there were changes in the law enforcement response, and every year, they're doing work about what's the best way for us to respond. We need to keep our staff members up to date on that. The fact that they went to all three buildings, which my tenure here, whatever building called in, that was the only building that you saw law enforcement at. So this is something new, and that training, I think, is exceptionally important, and you should involve law enforcement representatives to also talk about their role and what they're going to be doing when they arrive. Just a suggestion.
Absolutely. And there's required trainings at each building each school year, but we don't typically do it as an entire district inevitably. The other piece that I forgot to mention before is we're developing a module within our onboarding process. So if you're not there for that August conference day, you're hired mid-year, you're a daily sub coming in and signing up for the first time, we're going to have something that they need to watch and sign off on, so they're aware. And I know unfortunately, one of the individuals who passed in the Nashville shooting was in fact a daily sub who just walked through a door unaware of what was happening. So we certainly want to prevent that from happening. Thank you. I want to hear what you guys have to say. Sorry, we're going to skip over you for now, Joe. Go ahead.
I was just wondering how we're like communicating all of the new procedures with the students, because I do think that it's really important for us to be familiar with the vocabulary used on the announcements and what is really going on. Hold in place, obviously, some of them are pretty straightforward, but other ones like lockout versus lock in are ones maybe we haven't heard before, and I do think that that was something that triggered on the day of March 30th that kind of set us off as this is different, this isn't what we usually do. It's usually straight to lock down, and then that's it. So I think it's important to have the students familiarized with it as well as the teachers, so I'm just wondering how we're doing that.
All right, so I think what we're trying to do across both campuses is, we've had much of this technology in place for several years, but we still practice the old way. And this year, ironically, starting this year, well before this most recent incident, we started practicing the way that we would actually react in the case of emergency, where before it was, yeah, if the high school locks down, we'll let the middle school know to deal with two. Obviously, we saw when, in the heat of the moment, that didn't happen. So it's forced us to rely more heavily on the integration we have between buildings to ensure that those things don't happen. But I do, and I mentioned it before, I do want to commend the high school students and staff, how quickly, when you're able, when you're reviewing the videos and when that call was made, how quickly the halls were empty, the building was silent. You would never know there was, you mean, seven hundred and something people in this building, plus another forty police officers. They were not nearly as quiet. But it was impressive to see how quickly and it's, people reacted, right? You knew it wasn't a drill, or you didn't think it was a drill, and that was something that was really impressive. I've had the unfortunate opportunity to be part of another lockdown, not a drill, a lockdown, in another school district, and it was many years ago, and I don't think districts took it as seriously. But I also walked in with arriving police officers with gun drawn, and there were students in the hallway, a few, but meandering about. And I'm sure it was traumatic for the students that were locked in classrooms, not going on. I could promise you, it was more traumatic for the students that were in hallways confronted by police officers, and they assume that everybody is the bad guy until they know they're not. So I was thankful upon arriving at Putnam Valley High School that there was nobody in the hallway, there was no students in the hallway, there was no staff in the hallway, and you guys did a really excellent job. So we'll be sure to keep practicing and explaining what those practices mean, explaining what the words of those practices mean, to ensure that everybody reacts accordingly. But again, you guys did a fantastic job in reacting to what you heard and doing what you've been trained to do. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that. I do think however, like unfortunately, some of the response that the high school students and the faculty and staff, but I'll say specifically the high school students as like I'm part of that community, I feel like some of it was mostly due to panic, and the only thing you can do is go somewhere that's not out in the open. And I think it was less because we knew it was happening, but more because we knew something was happening and we just had to go somewhere else. I don't think we really knew, like just as Emily said before, like the language was really complicated, and even myself, like I don't know the difference between, like when I'm panicked, like between the lock in, the lockout, like it's almost like the same word in your head when something's actually happening, so it's really stressful. And I feel like it's nearly impossible for a lot of people that aren't extremely like level-headed in panic situations, and people that are prone to like having trauma and having longstanding like traumatic experiences affecting them. I don't think that's really possible for them to make that differentiation. And so I do think that we need to definitely change a lot of the vocab, I mean, if possible, change the vocabulary that we use in these emergency situations, because something so similar is just so complicated in such a stressful situation. And I think also, like even the way, when, for example, the ninth graders come to the high school, they have a whole assembly for like an hour or so talking about, oh, attendance policies, and oh, you have to come to school this day, and your grades have to be this in order for you to get that. But we need to have the lockdown procedures in that presentation as well, because at the end of the day, I take knowing how to handle my life and make sure I'm alive over knowing what day I have to come to school, to be honest. So I think that's something that needs to be ensured that we implement that into an assembly like that, because- Because at the end of the day, like you said before, we've had the, these procedures over the course of the last couple of years, but we haven't really been using them. So I think it was a very sudden, like new, like, I think we had a lockdown drill once that we actually used, like the automatic system, I think we used it. And I just like, I was like, okay, this is new, this is different. But I feel like there was no like full explanation. But then, we have an actual situation where we actually need to truly know what's happening. And it's the same amount of confusion I had the first day that we started implementing that system. And I think the system's great, but I think it needs to be, there needs to be a lot more transparency and a lot more communication between the people that make the procedures and the people that have to follow the procedures. But I do appreciate how we have so many new resources and how we're trying to make sure that things are better than they were this last time.
It's great feedback. Thank you.
Simone, do you think it would help to have like a color-coded, like this is a red action? This is a yell, I mean, because maybe it's not, maybe it would be easier to understand what it is you're supposed to do in each of those lanes, rather than lock in, lock out, lockdown? I mean, you say that those words are so similar. I'm just trying to think of another way that you could talk about the different kinds of responses that might make it easier for students and less confusing.
Yes, I do think that's, I feel like that terminology is something that would have to be discussed, like, as like students at like a separate, like, meeting time. Because I don't really necessarily have like an example for you off the top of my head at the moment. But I feel like colors might be a little bit confusing because you have to like recall information in a stressful time. So that might not be the best one to use. But I feel like it's definitely a conversation that at least I know and Emily knows that we'll bring back to our like local student government to have a conversation about and kind of get a, just to kind of gauge on what students are thinking. Because there's a lot more students than just me and Emily and Christian that's usually here that have really good ideas and have a lot of good things to say. So I'll definitely make a note to bring that back. And at the next report, I'll have some more information for you.
Good.
Thank you. Now, unfortunately, the words aren't ours. We inherited those. So I don't know how much we can do to change what the actual words are. But I think you spoke a little bit to that robotic voice, right? That robotic voice was something different, and it was distinct. And it's annoying because it just goes on and on and on. And that, that should be the only way you ever hear lockdown in this building. So when you hear that robotic voice go on, you're going to know how to react because it's distinct and it's different versus a hold in place or a lock out, which would be announcements that would be made with a familiar voice over the PA system or over the speakers. So I think if we stay consistent in our practices, it'll be very clear to students what the difference between the two are because they are so distinctly different in terms of how they're called and how they're heard by individuals. So that's my hope is if we eliminate the human voice behind the lockdown, it'll be very clear when that robotic voice comes on, what you need to do. You'll know it's not a lockout.
I agree with that. That's definitely something that will come with time. And like, even though like we're, us seniors aren't part of that generation where that's like more normalized, I guess, I think it's good that that will become a more standard practice across the years as we have new generations of students coming through. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because there could be numerous reasons that are not really danger situations that a lock in or stay in place could be called. If an ambulance is coming because a faculty member or student is having a health issue where we don't want people in the hallways and stuff like that. So that would be a different situation, and it would be kind of the standard voiceover. So I could see that. Additionally, I would imagine, you know, getting on to the training piece, it's going to change over and over and over and over again. I mean, if we're going to, when we enter, I'm assuming at some point, we're going to be entering into this agreement with the sheriff's department where they're going to map our district. Things will change based on that information. So, you know, it's going to be a constant influx, retraining and training again.
You had mentioned the SRO and SPO in the budget for next year, which I think is great. Although, what's happening over the next two months?
Well, we still have, I mean, we have these conversations with our consulting company as well as members of the sheriff's department. They certainly feel that we have an adequate amount of staffing here. We've had this conversation after just about every incident that's occurred as to whether or not an additional person is necessary. So I don't want to downplay the fact that everyone involved in school security thinks that Putnam Valley is extremely secure and we are as safe as we could want to be with our current structure. Why shouldn't I say as safe as we are? But we're safe within our current structure. Our hope is that that additional SRO, which will obviously take time for the sheriff's department to hire and onboard, will take some time. But there's no, there certainly was no conversations of you guys are not safe, you need an extra person. We've had these conversations over years with, again, both our Al Tarras and the sheriff's office. And both believe that we are extremely safe in terms of our current setup. And hopefully, we'll be even safer moving forward.
Along with that, with training, how do we log, or will it be a process to log if someone's absent for the training to ensure that every employee, every staff member, every custodian, every RMOC employee goes through the training?
I think part of the training is on our electronic platform, which we get reporting back from, every individual has to complete it. We know who's completed and who hasn't through the electronic training platform that our district uses at the beginning of the school year. So it's every year, we have to re-watch those videos. It's like embedded tests in them. And then there's a log of everyone who created that. So we have an accounting to make sure that everybody who was responsible for completing those does.
Thank you. And I agree with what Helen was saying regarding the remind app because as we know, you have to go to certain locations within the school in order to get service. So any way we can use alternative reminders or notifications. For example, a teacher shouldn't be, a teacher's teaching a class, they're not looking at their phone. So we just need to make sure that we use all of our options available in order to notify what's going on, keep the communication open.
Just with that, I think a student is much more likely to be on their phone than a teacher. I mean, let's be real.
That's a good thing.
You just outed yourself.
So I was just, that's kind of what I'm trying to express is if there's more communication with the students during those situations, I know that we want to keep them calm and just make sure that, how you're talking about like their social and emotional health, which I think is really important. But for me, I think I'm more scared when I have no idea what's going on. And like Simone said, there's like a greater sense of panic. I felt pretty safe, honestly, because I was on my phone texting my friends, and they seemed to have more information than I do. And I think that that's probably maybe a good thing. That is how rumors get started. But also, I just felt much safer knowing that, oh, my brother said it was a robocall, like it's not real, like we're fine. And like I could tell my friend who was sitting next to me, who maybe has a different carrier than I do that didn't have service, that her texts weren't sending that, no, everything is fine, like we're going to be okay. Yeah.
And also, like regarding the alternate communication, other than remind, I know in the high school, we have like the phones on the wall in every room. So maybe if that message that is usually on remind is relayed through like somebody, like even if it's somebody in the office that's working in the office, is relayed through like that phone that every teacher picks up because you need to hear what's happening down in the office, if you need to send a student down or anything like that. So maybe if that message is relayed through that phone that all teachers have access to and all teachers are knowing that is a priority to pick up, maybe if that message is relayed through that means of communication, that could possibly be another alternative.
Thank you. Any other questions on the board?
Okay, before we go to the budget presentation, I'm going to ask that we skip down to the new business and do the first resolution.
Then we'll go back.
And then we'll go back. Yes.
We saw the recommendations superintendent schools to appoint Alyssa Cohen to a four-year probationary term as a school psychologist commencing on September 1st, 2023, and terminating on August 31st, 2027 in the tenure area of psychology at the high school. On step six of the PVFT salary schedule, Ms. Cohen holds super school psychologist permanent certification and school psychologist national certification. Second.
Questions or comments?
I do want to acknowledge that Alyssa is here with us this evening, maybe thinking, what did I get myself into? But I promise, this isn't every minute, this doesn't happen all the time here, right? This is, this is a big deal because it happened once. But again, she comes in with a wealth of experience. I know she impressed the committee, the screening committee, as well as the interview committee. I had a great conversation when I met with her and offered her the position. And we're really looking forward to welcome her into our district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Welcome, Alyssa. Okay, so we're going to go back up to the budget.
So I apologize, so I apologize in advance for those that are seeing this presentation for the third time. Not much has changed. So as always, our budget is built around an alignment between our mission, vision, and goals, which as everyone is aware, is keeping our child first and foremost, building a foundation for the future. This is a quick breakdown of some of our goals for last school year that will continue into next school year. Implementation of a multi-tiered system of support, looking at the whole child and finding ways to support them socially, emotionally, and academically. Communication has been a goal of ours throughout the school year. We've held numerous parent engagement evenings, opportunities for community engagement, revived our building steering and district steering committees, really finding any way to welcome input from our community members, our staff, and our students. There's been a tremendous amount of professional growth accomplished in the district over the past year. Our elementary school has implemented a new reading program. They've doubled down their efforts on foundations. Our middle school is in the beginning steps of implementing the middle years program from IB. And our high school continues to excel through the diploma program as they're ready for our reevaluation. Again, we're always looking to find instructional programs, innovative instructional programs, and ways to improve our student learning. Quick rundown of who we serve. So our elementary school currently has 549 students. The asterisk just notes that we're still enrolling kindergarten students. Our 538, our middle school is 435 students, and our high school currently has 503 students. A breakdown of those numbers. For our elementary school, we currently have 75 registered kindergarteners. While that's a little low than we typically have, we hope that number will continue to grow. I do want to point out that once we register four more kindergarten students, which I'm sure will happen, it'll be the third year in a row in which we've seen an increase in our enrollment in the elementary school. For those who have been paying attention, remember, for many years, we've seen a slow decline in enrollment. But following COVID, where we had nearly 400 students move into the district, obviously across all grade levels, we're beginning to see an influx of students at elementary school level, which is great news as those students move through the grades and through our buildings. Our middle school enrollment, as projected, has seen a decline over the past three years, 487 to 475. The projected for next year is 435. There's definitely an anomaly there. Class of 81 students will be coming into fifth grade. That class is quickly followed by another class of 130 students, I believe. So while we know that's a small class, we know that those numbers will immediately jump back up as that class moves through the middle school. And our high school enrollment, again, has declined. We're graduating much bigger classes than those classes that are coming up from the middle school. But this year also marks the first year in which we're welcoming students from the Garrison School District who will be paying tuition to join students at Putnam Valley. Some of the driving factors of our budget that we have to consider while building it, obviously contractual salaries and benefits represent 60% of our overall budget. Employee and retiree healthcare represents another 12%. Our vendor contracts and services represent 21%. This has been especially challenging this year as inflation continues to grow. Obviously, those increased costs are passed on to the school district. The school district does not have the same ability to increase revenues based upon inflation. Our inflationary number in our tax cap is capped at 2%. So where we're seeing 7 and 8% increases in many aspects, we're only able to levy approximately 2% more when figuring out our tax cap. And transportation cost is at 7%. This chart shows the budget implications related to healthcare, and it represents every employee in this school district. It's not specific to any members, units. It's myself and everyone else included in this chart. So the dark blue columns represent actual costs, dating back eight years when we started tracking this data. The light blue chart represents projected future costs. The thick red line is our cost the district spends on retiree healthcare. The green line represents the amount of money the district spends on active employee healthcare. You'll notice from 2015 to this school year, there's over a $2 million increase in what the district pays in premiums related to healthcare. Many may suspect that COVID is the driving force. But a breakdown of the numbers shows that nearly 50% of that increase occurred prior to COVID. And that healthcare costs have only continued to grow since then. The pink line represents the trend, just simply taking the average increase over each year and projecting forward. So that projection over the next 10 years will bring our current healthcare contribution of $6.6 million up to over $13 million in 10 years. And this chart represents what is the burden placed on the school district by healthcare and what becomes a course, a cost that it becomes quickly unsustainable. Some of the ways we're looking to bridge the gap between buildings, I had mentioned before, the MTSS framework is something that's being initiated district-wide. We're in our final steps of finalizing our core values and learner profile. We're working hard on curricular alignment. Ms. Levine and Dr. Doherty have been working hard to make sure that our buildings are aligned across curriculum. And we're looking to improve our instructional practices and engagement in students. So on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Figarella, who's going to talk more about strategic budgeting.
So just a little, going to go off the path a little bit here because I think there is not a lot of reason to repeat a couple of these slides. But I would like to inject that, you know, the budget is assembled in a very thoughtful fashion. And I would like to emphasize, you know, that the budget cap is something we take very seriously when we're putting the budget together. There's a reason that the governor instituted the tax cap and a reason that the district utilizes the formula to the extent that it needs and not beyond what it needs. It is to support and sustain programs, and it is to act in a fiscally responsible way. We have appropriated fund balance each year to help close gaps so that we don't have to go to the extent that we need to from our reserves and that we only use what we, we only use revenues that we need for what the program's to support, right? So the gap, you know, I think it's not necessary to repeat some of these slides. I just wanted to emphasize our thoughtfulness when we are doing our budgeting. So currently, with the proposed change for the additional SRO in the middle school, high school campus, and the reduction for the pre-K program that we will not be able to run because the RFPs that came in are not sustainable by the, you know, by the budget, because the state is only too willing to kick in $5,400 per student. And the RFPs that we got were at least double or more of that. that we got were at least double or more of that. So that's not going to, that's not going to happen, and that brings our budget down in revenues by $410,000 and our expenses by $410,000. So, but the SRO expenditure is about $90,000, and that has been added to, into the proposed budget. I'm going to skip over these couple of slides. It's very, pretty repetitive of things we've been saying. So the budget consists of three parts. It's the program, the capital, and the administrative budget, and the program is about 75% of the budget. Our capital expenses are about 15% of our budget, and the administrative costs are about 11% of the budget. And this is how the expenditures break down. We see, I added a column from last time. I thought, just not showing the change in budget, the percentage from year to year, but actually what percentage of the budget, the proposed budget is each, each area of the budget. So about 30% of our budget is attributable to instruction and student services at $17.7 million. Our special education is about 13% of the budget. Our instructional media makes up about 3% of the budget. Pupil services and athletics, about 7%. Transportation, about 6%. Our general support, which is our district administration, legal costs and insurance, and that's not benefits insurance, that's insurance on the buildings and facilities, is about 4%. Our central services, which is operations and maintenance costs, about 5%. Employee benefits throughout the district, about 23%, so added that with the instructional costs and our salaries and benefits together, about 50% of our budget. And then we have our debt, our debt service, which is our payments on capital construction, and that's about 21% of our budget. I separated out the inter-fund transfers from the debt service to show that that actual money coming in from our debt fund, which, our debt service fund, the 1.5 million, is 2.7% of the 4.4% increase in the budget. So just to give you an idea of what the actual increase in the budget is, it's about 1.3%. An overall budget of $58,145,135. That being said, I wanted to, people may ask, how do we compare two districts across the state as far as our cost per student goes? And statewide, the average is about $23,000. In Putnam Valley, it's about $25,000, $26,000. And these are figures from 2021. They've been audited by the state. We don't have anything more recent. It's not a simple calculation of just taking the revenue and dividing it by the number of stu, I mean, the expenses and dividing it by the number of students. There's a formula that they use. They exclude certain things, they add certain things to that to come up with these figures for all the districts, and that's, there's actually a website linked here if anyone would like to go to it to see the financial transparency of any of the districts in the state, you can find it there. So you can see that districts surrounding us are similar, and the ones that aren't, there are a good reason for that. But Lakeland, in particular, are neighbors. I like to use that as an example. We have a similar cost per student, yet their tax base is supported, so, you know, a large percent of their tax base is supported by commercial property, and I feel that that's a good comparison because we're able to afford per stu, you know, the cost per student that they have, yet on our budget and with hardly any commercial tax base. Again, another way, looking at comparisons around the area for taxes on a home, average home value at $400,000, same kind of statistic. You'll see the Lakeland district maybe a little bit less. They have a huge commercial tax base supporting them, and the other districts are very similarly taxed at, for an average home. And again, these, all this information is accessible at these websites that you see at the bottom of the page. So if any of your neighbors or friends weren't able to watch or listen to budget presentations, all of this information appears on our website, and it's accessible to everyone. I shared our tax rates here for the last three years. I purposely am not projecting a tax rate for this year. We have too much volatility in the housing market with inflation the way that it is. We will not see final assessments or final equalization rates until July. Last year, I predicted that rate would be about $25 per thousand, and it was only 22. So I'm certainly not going to put out a rate that can fluctuate so much from the time we present the budget until the time we actually get a tax rate, which is until July. This is a helpful reminder, hopefully, for taxpayers that are, you know, the total tax is levied and determined to be collected by the board. They're not assessed by the school district, but yet they're assessed by the assessor's office or professionals that are hired by the assessor's office. So it's important to understand that that assessment isn't final until after May 25th, and the tax rate that's developed from the levy is what gets applied to that assessment. It also, to remind people that they should be applying for anything they feel they're eligible for, for tax exemptions, that can help with your property taxes and school taxes, and the deadline for that was March 1st, but it's important, even if you didn't do it, to look into it, make sure you get information about it so that you can tap into that the next time around. And again, this, again, is a, a link to that, where you can find information on the state website to get all of that information. So our budgetary goals were to meet state and federal requirements, meet student needs academically, socially, emotionally, maintain safety and security in our facilities. Those are some of the key elements when we're developing our budget. So to recap, our allowable tax levy this year calculated out to be 2.5%. We're proposing it at 2.45. Our proposed budget-to-budget change now is 4.16. And again, 2.7% of the proposed budget represents the money that we have in our debt reserve that is being transferred over to our general fund, general operating fund, to help pay the debt so that it can release some of the money within the budget to pay for the roof repair and renovation. If we didn't have that money in our debt service fund, we would not be able to do that, we would have to bond it. So I think, you know, budgeting fiscally responsible every year has allowed that to happen. Here is what we're going to be voting on, May 16th, right? So there's two, three propositions, the first one being the school district budget. The second one, we are renewing the district's bus borrowing plan, so you will see a proposition on the ballot. It's, again, it's the same amount as last time. We're not actually borrowing the money. It just gives us the authority to borrow money should we need to purchase a bus. So right now, the proposition will read $500,000. Every, every small bus, or I forget how many passengers the small ones are, they vary now, too, that we have different sized small buses. So they run around $75,000. The large buses run around $120,000, and if we were to have to go out and buy one, they aren't planned in the budget. This allows us to borrow money to pay them off over five years should we need to purchase one. Again, it's just like a line of credit. And then the Board of Education trustee seat will also be on the ballot. It's not considered a separate proposition. So the third proposition is the public library budget, and I believe we have someone here tonight to talk about that as well after we are finished. Okay, I haven't presented these slides, and I definitely wanted to go over this because I think this is super important. It's information that public should know, voters should know about, and it's about a contingent budget. I'm required to talk about it as well. It is part of a budget presentation that it should be shared. When the voters, if the voters reject a school budget, or the Board of Education has three options under the law as it stands right now. We submit, they can either ask to submit the same budget for a second vote and rework it, that's actually the second option, to submit the revised budget. So you can submit the same budget over, you can submit a revised budget for a second vote, or we can adopt what's called a contingency budget. If the budget were reworked or put up for a second vote and it went, and it failed the second time, it would automatically go to contingency. We have no choice, there's no third vote, that's it. So a contingent budget by law is, is a rejected budget the second time, and it means that the budget, in our case, would have to be cut $966,000.
Joe, can you explain where that $966,000 figure comes from?
Yep, so the 966 is the difference between this year's tax levy and last year's tax levy because a contingent budget means you have to revert back to the prior year's levy. That means now the budget has to be reworked to exclude $966,000.
Right.
It means, it can only mean a couple of things, and one of them is, you know, loss of jobs, whether it's teaching or non-teaching. There isn't any way that the budget could be reduced by $966,000 without touching jobs. It's not a threat, it's a promise if it happens because it has to, there's some way that we have to get to that bottom line, and we have to continue the education in the district. And that is the way that it works. Students lose programs, people lose jobs. That's, when you're talking about $966,000, there isn't any other way about it.
Literally, we would need to run the district based upon last year's budget.
Basically.
With all the increases, contractual, transportation-
Inflation.
And everything else, inflation, we would revert back a year and try to fulfill all those things.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Can't do it.
So, and-
With additional restrictions.
There are, I'm going to go on to, to show you some more. I didn't want to put it all on one slide, it's a lot of information. So what happens if the budget fails and what happens if the budget passes, right? So if the budget fails, again, $966,000 has to get cut from the budget. Doesn't just have to get cut from the budget next year, it gets cut from the budget forever, and it compounds year after year. Because once you start off with a lower amount next year in your tax cap formula to develop that tax cap, you have to continue to start off with that lower number, and it compounds every single year thereafter. So student programs and opportunities are decimated, positions reductions will be necessary for teachers and non-teaching staff, class sizes would increase, extracurricular activities would be reduced, all services are compromised, including the ability to keep up our facilities. Our property values decrease when there's fiscal stress, and next year, the district would most likely have to propose a budget that exceeds the tax cap. So if the budget passes, what happens then? So then, we protect the future of our current programs, we're able to sustain them, we're able to sustain positions, we're able to stay focused on the district mission, vision, and goals, we can move forward with student success. And just a little note here, the $966,000, if I calculated that out, it calculates out to about 67 cents per day per property owner on an average home of $400,000, and it's either a 2.4% increase, there's different ways to look at it, and 2.4% increase even when our inflation is 7 to 8%. So here's another example. If, I would say, we could cut some materials and supplies and extracurricular activities, sure. It's not going to add up to $966,000. So those are an estimate of what I feel we would be able to, and it's just an example. Of course, that's, you know, we're not there, but I just want to give an example of what an impact that would be. Talking about five to six teaching position, non-teaching and teaching positions, materials and supplies of about $166,000, and extracurricular activities around $100,000. That would give us what we needed. I don't know, you know, where we would end up cutting if we had to. In year two, the district would be starting with a budget that's $1.9 million lower, and in year three, the district would be starting with a budget that's $3.8 million lower, and so on. These are the things that we would have to eliminate, we would not be able to continue with, Mr. Forough, you asked that question. So community use of buildings and grounds is no longer available without, without a cost, don't have a lot of that, so not a huge impact. But any equipment over $5,000 would be prohibited, and I was trying to think of some examples of that. For instance, we have a snowplow that breaks. We can't plow the driveways. I can't go out and buy a new one. I have to either lease it, which is going to cost me more than if I had to replace it, and it's going to, and it could, or it could result in hiring a company to do the work, which, again, would result in, in an increase in cost. Same thing with the bus. Bus breaks down, I can't buy one, I have to lease it. I would be able to lease it, of course, it's going to cost more than, than purchasing it. Certain capital expenditures would be eliminated unless it's related to an immediate health and safety need, and again, it, I go over the fact that we have to revert to the prior tax years levy, years' tax levy. Excuse me. And this is just a reminder for people to get out and vote. Don't be complacent, don't think that your neighbor is taking care of what they need to do for your local school district. We're voting on the annual school budget, the board trustee, the bus proposition, and the public, Putnam Valley Public Library Budget. Okay, it's separate from the school district budget, it is in no way connected to the school district budget, the school district budget does not support the library budget, and the library budget does not support the school district budget. They are just a proposition on the ballot, they use it as a mechanism for their own needs. The vote is Tuesday, May 16th, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. It's at the elementary school. Absentee ballots, that's had to be requested by April 17th, oh, that's still, until Monday? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, April 17th to May 9th, to request them to be mailed?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And they need to be received back to the district clerk by May 16th, by 5:00 PM. And this is our district clerk's contact information, Maureen Bellino, and her phone number. And that is all to the presentation, but you may have questions for me? You may not.
I have a question regarding Slide 9, the budget implications. Just hearing chatter out in the community, this, any of the budget implications and the future healthcare costs, this is not an impact on the current retiree benefit? It's any future-
No, by law, there is no mechanism for us to ever impact retiree benefits or retiree cost. There is no cost for retirees.
For the current?
For the, for the retired employee, only for the spouse if they wish to have benefits through the district, and no reduction in any of the benefits either. So the word benefits means what they're, what they're covered for, and there is absolutely no reduction in that, and there is no reduction as far as what they would need to contribute if anyone else's contributions changed. It would never affect retirees.
The current retirees.
No.
Right, so just to echo that, we can never start charging them for the health insurance that they already get for free, and we can never reduce the health insurance, the quality of the health insurance they receive in retirement.
That's correct.
Both of those are protected by law. Nowhere do we ever do that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Joe, I wanted to clarify, the, the addition of an SRO is, is now baked into this budget as well as the removal of the income and expense for the preschool dollars, correct?
Correct, that's the way it's being proposed this evening.
We did issue an RFP for looking for a community partner to offer pre-K services, which the revenue would be provided by the state. But as suspected, based on our conversations with our community partners in the pre-K industry, the per pupil expenditure we would receive from the state would never cover the operating costs of a pre-K center on the Westchester-Putnam School Board, border. So we'll continue our advocacy work at the state level to either fully, to change the formula to provide a reasonable amount of per pupil expenditure for us that would allow us to service pre-K students here in Putnam Valley, or to simply remove the per pupil expenditure cap. expenditure cap and allow districts, local discretion, to negotiate the best deal they can with a regional provider. We may service fewer students, but it would at least give us the ability to service some students. The way the current formula is set up, we cannot, we will never find a partner that's willing to do it for the per pupil expenditure that the state's willing to provide, and we have no authority to increase that or to eliminate it till action happens at the state. So, I know that Barbara and myself pushed our local, uh, state assembly people to, and senators, to bring that back to their one-house budget conversations, and obviously, this New York State budget is not yet adopted, so it's a possibility that something could change, but as of right now, we have not found a willing partner that can do it for the amount of money the state is providing. And that's not really the amount of money, it's the breakdown of the money, it's the per pupil expenditure piece of it. Uh, so we'll continue trying, I think it'll be a huge asset to the Putnam Valley School Community and the Putnam Valley Community, but certainly, the last thing we want to do is, is put local businesses out of business, which is why we're not looking to take it on ourself, and instead, looking to partner with a local business that's able to, we're just really able to pass the money through us and onto them to service the students of Putnam Valley.
And then, on, on state budget watch, they, they've done a second year's tender for the amount of time that it will take, but it, it appears as though both legislature and the governor are in agreement, there's no disagreement on any of the educational funding piece. That could change if something else happens, throw a wrench into it, but that, that's where we're at now. So, we're feeling pretty confident in the number that we have in our breakdowns, correct?
We are, we are, we still don't have a final state aid figure, that, but that's correct, yes.
I think for the first time ever, both one-house budgets and the governor's budget were all in agreement regarding...
The education.
The education piece and foundation aid restoration, so, for once, public education is not in the crosshairs of those conversations. To your point, I guess anything could change, but, uh, leading into the, I'm sure, more politically driven debates that are occurring in Albany right now, it appears that public education is not one of them at this time.
Then, further clarifying, I just want to reiterate the number, if I heard it correctly and I'm seeing it correctly, with the, well, by, as far as new dollars for the budget, it is a budget increase of 1.3%, when we take out a, you know, an inter-fund transfer that we're using for capital work. So the increase in the budget, taking out this one-time transfer, is 1.3%, correct?
That's correct. Budget to budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we are scheduled to...
So, yeah, that's un...
Adopt this budget next meeting, correct?
Right, it has to, it should be adopt, adopted by April 25th. I know we originally spoken about doing it this evening, with the change, I think we feel, I would feel more comfortable waiting, wait for feedback, we've made some changes, I don't want to, you know, we don't want to just, I, I don't know that you feel the same way, but I, I would imagine, with the recent change in the budget total, that we would like to give it a week or so for questions to come in and be able to respond and give feedback. I was gonna mention the PTA, and anybody welcome to come to a meeting on April 19th, to discuss anything about the budget, and of course, I'm always available, so, anytime anybody has questions, um, somebody, anyone can send me those, or call me, and I'd be happy to discuss the facts and give people the correct information, so that they can make a decision when it's time to vote.
So, while we were prepared a few weeks ago to have our budget adoption this evening, it was really the addition of the SRO position that changed that path we were on. We want to provide the community an opportunity to at least provide comment or feedback regarding that, so we felt a little disingenuous to add it right before the meeting, and then to adopt the budget right afterwards without providing that opportunity. So, that's why the decision was made to extend the budget adoption, to delay the budget adoption until the next meeting, when it really needs to be done by, uh, in order to provide the community opportunity to provide feedback on a last-minute change to our budget.
Yeah, it definitely needs to be done, there's other reporting that's due by the day after the 25th, and then in order to facilitate the budget newsletter and get it out in a timely fashion, all of that has to take place in a very short window of time.
There are a lot of moving parts in those three weeks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. Item one, please.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 16 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second, questions or comments?
The consent agenda tonight includes approval of minutes, it approves additions to the 22-23 sublisting, it approves CSE/CPSE placements, additional hours for staff members, unpaid time for staff members, additional bereavement days for our staff member, an additional 2023 spring coach, William Riccardi, who's been named the assistant coach for girls varsity lacrosse, winter postseason athletic stipends for girls basketball, boys' basketball, cheerleading, wrestling, and indoor track, approval of the 23-24 initial contract of services with Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's, approval of participation in cooperative bidding with Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's through next June, amend the salary letter of agreement for our athletic trainer with some additional duties for this balance of the school year and next year. We're accepting a donation from the Putnam Valley Education Foundation, which is $647.64, which is for grant requests from staff members, approving health and welfare contracts with Katona, Bedford, and Lakeland, and we're approving agreements with Maris College and Schindler Elevator Maintenance. We're also approving, appointing an acting district clerk for next week, Jeanne Denike. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just want to thank the Education Foundation for their support of our teachers and our students.
Yes.
And their donation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Consent agenda passes. So, new business.
Number two.
Number two, please, Sam?
Oh, right, we did number one, sorry.
You did number one.
Okay. Sorry about that. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Emily Halliday to a four-year probationary term as an ENL teacher, commencing on September 1st, 2023, and terminating on August 31st, 2027, in the 10-year area of ESOL at the elementary and middle schools. On step three of the PBFT salary schedule, Ms. Halliday holds ESOL initial certification in order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term, and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Danielle Dearman to a 52-week probationary appointment effective April 17th of 2023 through April 16th of 2024 as an office assistant at the middle school on step five of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Sierra Espinera to a seven-week long-term substitute position as a general education teacher at the elementary school, effective May 5th, 2023 through June 23rd, 2023, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of $150 per day. Ms. Espinera holds childhood education first through sixth and early childhood B through two initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? This can't be Sierra.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness. Oh, I feel so old, she's only nine, no. She was nine when I had her. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. And number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jake Graham to a seven-week long, sorry, sorry, seven-week long-term substitute position as a general education, special education teacher at the middle school, effective May 8th, 2023 through June 23rd, 2023, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of $150 per day. Mr. Graham holds students with disabilities 1 through 6 and childhood education 1 through 6 initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of lunch monitor Evelyn Kalitsky from the district, effective March 29th, 2023, as per document 169 slash 23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved to add to into a successive agreement with Dr. Jeremy Luff, superintendent of schools, effective April 13th of 2023 through April 12th of 2028, agreement to be referenced in the official minutes of this meeting is document number 174 over 23.
Second.
Questions or comments? I'd like to reiterate that this has been in the works for months, since last year, and it follows the, the, I've just lost my words, the desire of the board to develop a budget that's fiscally sustainable, and that looks not just to today, but to the All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept red roof bid, I'm sorry, accept the roof bid...
It'll be green.
From Armored Tie Construction Corporation for partial roof replacement and repair at the high school, as per document number 175 dash 23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Again, this is at no cost to the taxpayer, correct, Dr. Russell?
Using funds, it is, it is already...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd now like to open it up for public comment on any topic. Oh, good, we have somebody here who's gonna comment.
Hi, Chris.
Hi.
Um...
Welcome, Delina, could you just introduce yourself? I know we all know you, we gotta introduce yourself.
My name is Delina Gritz, and I'm in, um, I'm a student at the middle school, and, um, I just wanted to come and talk about what happened with the lockdown, from like, and just like, explain it from like, a middle school student's point of view. So like, when it happened, I was in science class, and I didn't, I, it was just a regular day for me, and I looked out the window, and I saw like, a ton of police cars, and like, that sort of stuff, and we were like, confused, and so we tried to tell Ms. Dugall, but she like, didn't understand, like, that it was happening, and like, didn't know what was happening. At the time, so we were just in our, like, classes, everything was going on, and then I was even in the hallway getting like, my water bottle while this was going on, and it was just scary. Like, after I learned that that was happening, at like, the end of the day, to think that I was in the hallway when someone that could have been harmed to me was also, also could have been in the hallway. And like, even if it was like, false, I feel like we should have been on lockdown anyway, 'cause like, better safe than sorry, and, yeah, and it was just scary, and, yeah. Okay.
And you're right, should have been.
Yep.
We're gonna make sure it happens, it won't happen again.
Well, first, thank you for coming to speak, I know it's very difficult to get up and speak in front of all these individuals. Secondly, I certainly apologize for that feeling, I could, I can imagine how scary of that experience it was for students to see everything going on outside and having no idea what was, what was happening inside, and I could promise you that I will do everything in my power to ensure nothing like that ever happens again, so no other students need to feel the way you felt the other day.
Especially 'cause of like, social media, and we see like, what can happen on like, TikTok, and like, all the social media platforms and stuff, and it just makes it like, you don't know what's happening and what could be happening to you, and then like, my brother in like, kindergarten, like, then you start thinking, and you start, like, thinking about what, the possibilities.
It's a scary world, for sure.
Yes.
Thanks, Delina.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Miranda?
This is not on the agenda. Um, so a couple of weeks ago, I, it was after hours, after working hours, I emailed my son's teacher about a book that I received in a photo that was in our book fair, and she had had it on her, you know, teacher wishlist, and it was in her basket. Within five minutes, the teacher called me, the teacher assistant called me, and the whole thing got resolved, and I just want to accredit that teacher for resolving it and letting me sleep that night, and I was very, very thankful for that. The title of the book was My Shadow Is Purple. I thought, that must be a cool book, when I looked at the cover, and then I read the book, it didn't belong in a kindergartner's class, or my son's class. If you want to separate the kids, and some parents want it, fine by them, but not my child. But I was very proud of the teacher. And I think I have one more question, if you don't mind, if you can't answer it, it's okay. There's a question that came through on my cell phone today, is Dr. Luff already negotiating his own contract, and I think they want an answer to that.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Are you already starting to negotiate your own new contract that has not expired yet? That is the question.
Well, I think the board just accepted my new contract, so yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And our teachers have none.
Good evening, my name is Laurlee Kennedy. First of all, I just want to start off and say, I do budgeting for my school, but, wow, that was amazing. That's a lot. I actually have a few questions, more on the lines of what you discussed with the incident that happened. So, does, do, does each school have a building response team?
Yes.
Okay, and do they need either weekly or monthly to debrief, or have roundtables and things like that?
So they meet regularly, they certainly need to debrief anytime after an incident. Like, I could say, all three building emergency response teams met following the incident before break.
Okay, and obviously, they have everybody, like, your building response team leader, and the other five, like, emergency officers, special needs coordinator, and all that other stuff. Are there any videos, I guess, shown to the students with the severity of what the situation could have been? And the reason why I say this, I have two children who are in the middle school, and unlike, you know, Delina, they felt like, you know, it's not that serious, relax. No, it is that serious, and, you know, we spoke to them about that, my husband is a retired law enforcement, and, you know, we're trying to make sure that they understand. So, I, I work in New York City public schools, and when that happened, there was a lot of text messages going on through, you know, a lot of, with a lot of the moms, and it was very scary, and one of my coworkers turned around and said, you know, he says, we're so, in New York City, we're so used to having a lockdown or a shelter-in, because hearing gunshots where I work unfortunately is not unusual. And one of my coworkers turned to me and said, I said, that's kind of really scary, and one of the coworkers turned to me and said, well, you know, it's in the suburbs is where they come, if you look at any of the stuff that you see on television, it's, they're coming to schools like this. So having something like that situation and text messages going on was quite nerve-wracking. For me as a parent, I'm sure for everybody, especially, um, hearing the students speak in the high school, and being there must have been extremely difficult. So, I guess, are there videos or discussions or things like that that are brought to the middle school as well as the high school?
So I can't speak to any specific videos that I'm aware of? uh, that I'm aware of. But it's certainly a topic that we could bring back to our building emergency response teams and our security consulting company to see if there's something they recommend. Is there something out there that we don't know about? Um, but I can't recall videos by themselves. But I did wanna touch on another point, and I don't wanna ruin her words, but I, I know Simone had mentioned it before. There's a very sad aspect of what you had pointed out. Students in schools now have become, I don't remember what the word you used was. I wanna say numb, but you had said something else about... What was it? Desensitized. See, she uses better words than I do. Um, have become desensitized to this. And, and it's a scary thought. Um, they're, they see it so often on the news and on social media that there's definitely an aspect of being desensitized to, um, these type of events. And certainly, I think high school students who were part of what transpired, that they're no longer desensitized to it. But, uh, certainly, middle school students didn't have the same experience. And, and we would certainly do anything in our power uh, to make them aware of how, uh, real uh, these situations can become quickly. While at the same time, trying not to terrify them, so.
Right. Just like there are evacuations, fire drills that are practiced every year, how many lockdowns are practiced in all the schools?
So all schools in New York State are required to practice at least two lockdowns. Um, every school year, you have to do one in the spring and one in the fall. And, um, but it doesn't mean you couldn't do more.
Right.
But it's a requirement to do at least two each year. And we do ours in coordination with law enforcement. So we, we invite in other law enforcement agencies. Uh, there was actually one at the elementary school today. There were state troopers there as well as Putnam County sheriffs. They try to rotate in people that are not familiar with the school. It's a great opportunity, um, for members of law enforcement to become aware of not only the school's policies, practices, procedures, but also, um, aware of what the school... And I know there was a new sheriff there today who had deputy there today who had not yet, uh, previously been in the school. And RSBO had taken him for a tour following the drill uh, to give him a sense of the building. In case of emergency, if he was ever required to respond, he would have some familiarity of the building.
Um, I know that, I don't know your name, I'm sorry, but one of the students had mentioned something about like, um, maybe posters or something. They do have, I, well, I know New York City does, um, posters that show, um, the difference between lockdowns, shelter-ins, and evacuations. Um, and also, it should have, like you said, you don't make up the words they are given. You know, like, this is a soft lockdown. And usually for, in the city, it's different here. I don't know what the regulations are here. Or it's said two times and you do whatever it is. So if it's a lockdown, everybody is, what they do here, you shut the doors, close the lights, lock everything and stay quiet. A while ago, I was one of the building response team leaders for a school that I had worked at in the Bronx. And I used to cringe when I would hear, um, news reporters say that the school was on a lockdown shelter-in. Um, so I think what you're saying is it's important for people to understand and know the difference of what is a lockdown, what is a shelter-in, and what happens. And students do need to know as well so that they are aware of what is going on. Only one thing that I did wanna also mention or maybe put out there is maybe for the students and staff, if there would be able to, um, have, create an anonymous survey for students, staff members, either on their knowledge of what the different things are, lockdown, shelter-in, their feelings about the situation that recently occurred. And this way, the schools would know and you would know, um, how to better prepare so that people are understanding and then feel more comfortable.
Thank you very much for your feedback. Good information.
All right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 really, the one other thing, and I'm sorry.
Yep.
When you talked about security in all of the buildings, would the security also mean that it wouldn't just be a security guard, but some guard who would be able to hold a concealed weapon?
So currently, both campuses have an officer with a weapon, a, a uniformed officer who carries a weapon with him at all times. Um, the proposal before the board will be the addition of a third uniformed armed officer. Um, so right now, both campuses have that. That would become a, a model where all three buildings have a uniformed armed officer in the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Krista Strab. I have, uh, two children, one's a graduate and a tenth grader. I've, uh, been around a long time, um, in the district, about thirteen years. Um, and some things have been bothering me recently, um, regarding the teachers. I, uh, when I was, um, when my kids were smaller, I worked in corporate. I worked like maybe sixty, seventy hours a week. I do budgets, uh, too. I have to get them voted on as well. Um, but I've never been so tired than when I spent a day volunteering in the classroom. I was a class mom, even though I worked. I, it was important for me to be involved. Um, and I would go and we would do our crafts or whatever. And I would be exhausted, exhausted. I mean, my whole body would hurt, you know, from being with those kids all day. So I have, you know, I've always appreciated our teachers. Um, they send us videos during the day, you know, when they know we, we work. And, you know, my, my Tommy, he always had trouble, um, in, in the elementary school. So they would always send me updates and stuff like that. So, um, they've always been happy, too. Um, and I don't, I'm not seeing that recently. I'm, I'm seeing some like contention. I don't know details and I'm not, you know, I don't know enough to take a side, you know? But I was somebody who, all the teenagers wanted to come babysit for me because I would pay double for the people that took care of my kids. And I don't want unhappy people taking care of my kids. So if you can, please fix what's going on. Um, motivation and, you know, all these things with the security, you know? We don't want them disgruntled, you know? We don't want them to feel, "Why am I gonna, you know, protect?" Uh, you know, when, when we're not being taken care of, you know? Um, we shouldn't be asking teachers to jump in front of bullets. That's not what they're, they're supposed to be nurturing our children, teaching our children. I know this is nobody's fault. I mean, this is just the world, you know, what's going on. And we are all desensitized to it. So I thank you, you know, for, for getting the SRO. Um, I had asked for it actually last year. And if, if we did it, you know, we would have avoided this that day. Um, because I never understood how one person, could monitor two buildings, um, for an SRO. I mean, if there's an emergency, you need one in each building, kind of, you know? I mean, that's just, I'm not a cop, so I, I don't know. But I appreciate, um, the debriefing. I, I'm not, you know, it's panic, you know? I mean, I was in the car, I couldn't breathe. I couldn't breathe. It was on social media. I had just gotten to work. I parked. And I see on social media something's going on at the high school, there's cops all over the place. And I couldn't breathe, you know? And, and I, I texted Alyssa right away, "What's going on?", you know? Um, and she got back to me right away. And I got the communication right after I texted her. That was, the communication was pretty good. It, I didn't have like an hour of panic or anything, you know? It was like kinda a few minutes of really like panic. So I can't imagine being there, you know? Or being a teacher or, or, you, you're not trained for that kinda, you know? I mean, I know that we do the training and stuff like that, but, you know, we shouldn't, they shouldn't have to, to do that. So I appreciate getting the extra security, to keeping everybody safe. And, and the high school, I mean, like, you know, Mr. Mello, he, he really did a great job, I think. Um, I know he visited each classroom afterwards because people were really, you know, we were really upset. And, and social media is a problem, you know? Like, when I see an emergency, I don't go right on, you know, social media and say, "Oh, there's a car accident on, uh, Denny Town", right? Because my kid might be coming, or someone else's kid, might be, or a family member, whatever, coming from, I always go to the kids, you know? Coming from there. And then they're worried it's their family member or whatever it is. And you're creating like a, a panic in people that is unnecessary at that point. So I encourage people like, you know, with the social media, you know, when you see something and the cops are all over the place, call the school. You know, or, or try and find out before you, you know, kinda go out because if I hadn't seen that, right? I would have just gotten the email. I wouldn't have had like the panic in my car, you know? I, all I saw was, so, you know, "There's cops everywhere and something's going on." And then there were, so then people start, you know? And, and parents were coming, I'm telling you. We're not gonna see that and not come. And we shouldn't. That's why the communication to us that everything's okay is important because you don't want them in the way. Now, I do wanna bring up though, um, in this debriefing. So a few years ago, there was somebody who, there was a threat or whatever. And the student was not supposed to be in the building. Transportation picked up the student and brought them to the high school. I don't know if anyone remembers this, but he, he was, um, arrested, you know, not arrested, but he was removed from the building right away. It was, there was no threat. And he wasn't a threat, it turned out. But the point is, I don't know if I heard here transportation being notified because the buses were in the parking lot. And the buses, now, the kids are in the, in the buses holding place, they can't move. Now, if, and the cops were, were standing there in front of the, in front of the school with, with guns, right? So if someone's coming to the school, if they're gonna come to the school, the kids were right in the, in, in their buses right in front of the school. And I think, I mean, i- in, in the debrief or whatever, there should be some kind of bus reroute, um, somewhere else, uh, maybe to the park or whatever it is, um, when these lockdowns go into place so that the buses aren't sitting there, kind of, outside. And this happened, this is like the second time with the transportation. So I just wanted to ask if that's something that was discussed. Well, maybe you, you mentioned it, but I, I didn't, I missed it, so.
So I did actually have a conversation with, um, the transportation supervisor before even entering the high school. She had grabbed me to ask if there was anything she needed to know. Now, the middle school and high school students were already here. Had nothing to do with transportation here. Uh, she's asking about transportation at the elementary school. So I had already at this time known that it was a hoax and advised her that she can continue her routes as normal. So, yes, we had that conversation. And if there was any sort of threat or, or anything of that nature at the elementary school, I certainly would have advised her otherwise. And we have, I'm not gonna discuss what the procedures are, but we have procedures for rerouting buses and where they would go.
Oh, good.
For that. Unbeknownst to us, we didn't realize that the police would automatically respond to the elementary school.
Yeah, and they go to all, yeah. They have to. Because what if it's a mistake? What if someone says?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I get, no. You're right. I, I, I get, I get totally where you're going. Um, so had we realized that was gonna happen and then hold the students on place, in place, then we would have again rerouted the buses. So we know moving forward that in that situation, if it happens during arrival, that we would not bring the, the bu, even at the other campus, we wouldn't bring the buses to that campus until after the police were finished. Just, I mean, not that I think the students were unsafe. There was multiple police cars and police on this, on the scene. But it, it created a traffic issue. Buses were backed up onto the road. Uh, so certainly, had we known that delay would happen, we would have, we would have rerouted the buses somewhere else. And we have, again, constant communication with dispatch for our buses that could easily reroute them. Um, the problem in the elementary school is once they were all backed up, then they're sort of stuck there.
Well, and that was the point you made. I think what the difference was is that the call went directly to the police. And it wasn't the school calling the police to the campus. So like, I, I, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but the school had no idea the cops were coming, right? At that point. So normally, if the schools are calling nine-one-one, they're already doing their lockdown procedures. They got like ambushed, uh, with, with cops, you know? Didn't really, I don't know if that's the case, but.
I wouldn't say ambushed with cops, but.
Well, I was very happy with the response. It was very, I liked it.
Partially correct. You're, they were on their way before we knew what happened.
I, yeah.
But within seconds of being on their way, we knew they were on their way.
Yeah.
So it wasn't like they showed up and we were like, "What are you doing here?". Uh, but you're right. The call went into nine-one-one before the school district. They dispatched police officers and then notified the school district that they were on their way. So, uh, Deputy Mary knew very soon after the call and immediately began, sort of, went into police action and began clearing the high school. In fact, the entire high school was cleared before the first arriving officer got here. Thanks to Dan's quick actions.
Thank you, Dan.
So, Dan, that when the fir, when you look at the video, the first officers to arrive are greeted at the door by Dan telling them that he's cleared the building and sort of alleviating what they think is, is a very serious situation upon arrival.
Yeah. Well, all right. Thank you very much for, um, following up on this. We were all kinda crazy about it, so, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Anybody else?
Do we, do we need, is the library gonna speak or not?
I don't know. Terry, are you gonna speak?
Good evening. Uh, my name is, uh, Captain Riley, I'm the library director. And, uh, and we're just gonna wait for our presentation to come up.
Andrew, right. Okay, this is not centered? Is there something I can do to? I'm sorry?
It looked like that before she made the slideshow.
Really? Uh, I sent her a PowerPoint, so. Really? Okay, well, all right. What can I tell you? What can I tell you? Anyway, we're going to keep it short. We're going to skip through a few of these slides, but basic, oh, now we're back to normal. You know, we've been around since 1929. It was, the library was chartered in 1937. I expect that when we were at one time a toothpick factory, I expect that when we rip out the stage in the community room, I'm going to find thousands of toothpicks underneath there. But, you know, we're, most people are not aware of what we're asking for. We are pursuing the, what's called the Section 259.
Terry, can you put the microphone in front of you so that everybody can hear you?
Sorry, the state education law to allow, we're an association library to have a proposition that allows the voters to approve the amount that is allotted to us. Right now, we are under contract with the town. Most people don't even realize that. The portion of your town taxes that go to us, it's not transparent, truly. But this is and will be transparent. As was said before, we are totally separate and apart from the schools. The only thing, the school district will now become the taxing authority. And there will be a separate line on the tax bill that will be for us. Now, the budget does not have to increase every year. We have done a ton of work trying to figure out what the minimum is that we can get along with, and that is why we are asking for what we're asking. We do a million things for this community. Everything from books, ebooks, periodicals, Wi-Fi, programs for every age and interest, summer library programs, food bank. We even loan e-readers to the seniors at the senior center. Ton of people, you want to update it with the March numbers, our total annual attendance for 2022, we haven't, obviously don't have it yet for 2023, 41,000, with a total of 2,800 attendance of programs. More than, I mean, tens and tens of thousands of items in circulation. Now, what are March numbers? You have that? Come closer.
Just for March, the programs, 400 people attended programs, and we have at least, I just lost my slip, but I think I did it, and it was like 58,000 circulation.
So our numbers are only increasing.
And you have to remember, a lot of it's digital, so it's ebooks. It's not always physical in the library.
Right, but those ebooks actually cost a lot more than physical books, because you get so many borrows as a library, you get to lend it out so many times. So many times before you have to pay for it again. You have to buy another e-copy. So it's tough on us. If you've been in the library recently, you've seen that wonderful brown skylight. It is no longer, anyway, well, it was never clear, it was always, you know, a, whatever, frosted, but it is, it is well past, it was rated to last for 25 years, it's been almost double that. The sky is falling, Chicken Little is telling the truth. I'll be honest, that's one of my hens. I'm very proud of her. You know, we were, it's going to take, we have a partial state construction grant, but it's still going to take us more than $100,000 to replace that. And we also have to replace part of the roof. I want to know who your roofer is. Maybe we can get an estimate from them. And this is, this is going to wipe out. If we had to pay for it without an increase, it would wipe out our reserves, or just about wipe out our reserves. And then, a few weeks ago, the March storm took out several trees, including this one giant oak that fell across the waterway, crushed the guardrails, has torn up in the back of it, there's a, that sinkhole that was created, what is it? It's at least 10 feet across. It's a huge hole. We have, now, insurance will pick up some of that, but not a lot of it. We've got to replace this. Now, we have, what we have done, we've been asked, why, what we're asking for, it's, is it going to go all to capital improvements? No. And a lot of our capital improvements were going to spread out over several years. But what we looked at, our absolute musts are the, as far as capital improvements, the skylight, that's over $100,000. HVAC, we can put that off for a second year. Plumbing, we don't have hot water to large portions of the building, 20,000. Fire exit doors have to be done, absolutely have to be. Computers, our computers are 11 years old. 13, sorry, oh my gosh. Think of, you know, a computer that's four years old is terribly outdated. Our Wi-Fi, we need to boost the signal, but we also need to have a dedicated IP address, if you know what that is. Every time you, every time the signal drops, because on a sunny Tuesday, we have power outages here in Putnam Valley. And to get back on, we can't get back on, we cannot get our, it's not Sierra, but it's Sierra. Sierra database, our databases that we use to check people in and out. It can sometimes, because that's got to, because it drops, that sometimes takes a couple of days to get us back on, and everything has to be done manually. It's not pretty. We have operational updates that we really need. We want to restore some of the operations that we've had, and we need to increase our library hours. We're only available one evening. We want to go to two evenings. We want to, you know, maybe longer on Saturdays, and even, we hope to replace, we used to be open on Sundays. People who work five days a week don't, are at a great disadvantage. We need to restore a children's librarian position. That's 46,000 plus payroll taxes. You know, the library hours increase would be about 9,000. We've got to restore resources. Well, you know, I can count it up, but it counts up to 134,000 and change. We're asking, you know, that for, actually, the increase would be less than that. So we're going to be budgeting this very carefully. Yeah, as I said, up to date, we need to get community room up to date, we need audiovisual things that are better. Funding, right now, as I said, the town of Putnam Valley gives it to us. With inflation, we've actually not just been static, but we've been losing money every year. So, you know, we're requesting the, you know, from going from 347.6 to 460, as you can see on the first year, we've spent that increase, and the rest has got to be parceled out over the next few years. We were asked, why can, you know, why keep the library open, can't we just use Mayapack? The answer, the short answer to that is no. You know, an underfunded library or a community that doesn't have a library can only use a neighboring library for so much time before they start to charge you. How we stack up, we stack, I can't quite see it here, but we stack up at the near bottom. Our per capita funding is $20. And, you know, our closest to that is Brewster, southeast in the Brewster School District. Otherwise, all the other libraries have a lot more, and they all have either 414, which is the November ballot, or the 256, 259, I'm sorry. I'm trying to rush through this. Hello? Okay. Oh, sorry. I wanted to go back to, here we go. This is the important one. What is it going to cost you? Remember, we're counting the $400,000 is the average home value assessment. Currently, through town taxes, you're paying 71 bucks. We want to take it to 120. The per year increase would be, and this is per household, is just under $50. Remember, this is not an increase on your, the percentage increase, yes, is high, but it's not a percentage increase on your entire tax bill, just on what you have been paying currently. And that's it. We ask people to come out and vote. Any questions?
That's all.
Any questions?
You have information hours, information sessions that you're going to have to be discussing?
Yes, thank you. Kathy, go ahead.
So if anyone wants more information, they're welcome to come to other events. There's a Saturday, it's in person at the library on April 29th at 1:00 p.m. There are several Zoom sessions. There's Saturday, May 6th at 10:00 a.m., that's Zoom. You can register on our website at, sorry, putnamvalleylibrary.org. Wednesday, May 10th at 7:00 p.m., that's also a Zoom. And Monday, 5:15 at 7:00 p.m., that's a Zoom. And if anyone has any questions, you know, feel free to call the library, we're, you know, more than willing to speak with anyone who has questions about it.
And we also have, on our website, we have this presentation, so you can see each, you know, you can do the analysis, you can see what it really looks like. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, my eyes aren't working.
I just, can I make a comment? So just earlier, and it's something that's in my head now, having heard it a couple of times this evening, referring to the teacher's contract, and I just want to say that, as many times as it's been said, it's really not being said correctly, and that the teachers don't have a contract. They indeed do have a contract, and it's just not a new contract. They are operating under a contract, so the contract is not ended. They will continue to operate under that contract via the tri borough, trying to think of the Taylor Law. And there's more information about the Taylor Law on the state website, if anybody wants more details about it, but they are definitely not operating under no contract.
And just to piggyback, there isn't anybody at this table that doesn't want a fair contract for teachers. We, our teachers are a valuable resource. They reach out to children, parents, other people in the community. They're wonderful educators. They do so much for our community and our school. We appreciate them. There hasn't been a board meeting where Dr. Luff has not commented on how wonderful our teachers are and how hard they work. We also want a fair contract. But fair has to be fair for everybody. Has to be fair for students, taxpayers, teachers, employees, all employees. And going forward, has to be sustainable into the future. So that's what we're working for, and that, and we're hoping, Dr. Luff has said it many times, that this will be resolved soon. Okay. Upcoming meetings. Please, April 25th is a Tuesday meeting, that's our next board meeting, but it's on a Tuesday, just so that people are aware, it's a different day of the week. And that will adopt the budget then, right?
Will that meeting start at 7:00, or the reception runs before?
Yeah, so the, well, we have a little public service announcement. April 19th is the PTA School Budget 101 at the elementary school at 6:30. I know Jill had mentioned that before, but I have that next as my upcoming event. On April 25th, we do have our tenure candidates and retiree reception prior to the meeting. So I believe that starts at 6:00 p.m. Is that correct, Maureen?
Yes.
So 6:00 p.m. is when our reception begins before the meeting, and then the meeting itself will kick off at 7:00 p.m. And at that meeting is when we expect to adopt the proposed budget to move forward.
And the BOCSE's budget?
And the BOCSE's budget.
Which is why it's on Tuesday.
Right. Because everybody in the state, or the region at least, votes on the BOCSE's budget the same day.
Then the following meeting is May 2nd, after the April 25th meeting. So just a week later, we're back for another meeting.
Okay. So board member comments, anything?
I just have one thing. The passing of a very dear friend of mine, and a mentor for many years in the political arena, that I was involved with for 29 years. Marie Zarcone was a member of this school board. She was also one of the first women legislators representing our town up at the county. She passed away this week, was a remarkable individual. Whatever you may think politically or otherwise about Marie, nobody could ever take away her tenacity, her forcefulness, and her drive to do what she believed was best for our community. I feel very badly at her passing. When I heard the news, it affected me quite a bit. And I just want to put a quick remembrance in there that this is an individual who did a great deal, her and her family, Dr. John, her son Greg, John Zarcone, who's now a lawyer in town, for our community. And people like this should never be forgotten. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Anybody else?
I just want to thank Liz and the Science Fair attendees for coming tonight. I very much enjoyed that, so thank you.
That was outstanding.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Yes. Good night.